Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors meeting of February the 18th. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, my nation, my empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Please be aware, this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel, and also, the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. First item on our agenda is for public comment. Is there anybody here who has an item that is not on the agenda they want to raise with the board or staff tonight? Okay. Then we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Discussion Regarding the Following Applications Before the Zoning Hearing Board, which is an upcoming meeting. Shelby, do you know the date of it?
Uh, next Monday.
Thanks, Molly. February the 24th. Shelby, if you wouldn't mind leading us through the two applications that we're going to hear about.
Yeah, so before the Board Supervisors this evening are the following applications. Application 12-2024, this application is for 851 South High Street, which is the location of an existing Exxon gas station and convenience store. The applicant is seeking relief from the parking requirements under Section 8455I in order to allow for less parking than required, and from Section 8458JC in order to expand the existing nonconforming use by 25%, beyond the 25%. The applicant intends to expand the convenience store use, and there are no intentions of expanding the fueling stations. An issue with the property that is split zoned, with the front half being zone C1 and the rear being zones R3. The second application that will be appearing before the Board is Application 1-2025, which is 1115 Willner Drive. The property is located in the R3 residential zoning district. The applicant is seeking a variance from Section 8413 of the zoning ordinance. This section requires a 30-foot rear yard setback, and the variance is being sought in order to construct a detached garage inside that rear setback on the property. Both applications are scheduled to go before the zoning hearing board next Monday on February 24th, 2025. It would be remiss to mention that the Planning Commission did not issue a recommendation on either property due to the cancellation of their meeting on February 11th. The Planning Commission did review a previous iteration of 851 South High Street at their meeting on January 14th. While recommendation was not issued by the Planning Commission, it would be best to describe their response as mixed, but productive in conversation. I know that the applicant and their attorney are here for 851 South High Street, so we can start with them, and then, is there anybody? And then their 1115 Willner Drive for this year as well.
Thank you, Shelby. So let's start with the Application Number 12-2024, which is the 851 South High Street. So, does the Board have questions related to this application that's going before the zoning hearing board next Monday? I have one question to start us off. It's a single parcel, but it's dual zone, is that correct? Or is it two parcels that are owned by the same entity?
No, so it is one single parcel that is, I'm gonna say, directly split in half for it to be a split zone. The front portion along High Street is owned by C1, and the rear portion on the screen, which is more of that vacant grass area, is owned by R3. But the parcel itself is split zoned.
Okay. Mr. Long, I see you're here, so welcome. If you want to come up to the podium, and we'll see if there's any questions for you. So, does the Board have any other questions related to this application?
I mean, I do, but I'll give Mr. Long a chance to...
Do you want to introduce any further details, or do you just want us to get straight to questions? How do you want to proceed?
No, I can give you an overview of a little bit of what we're doing and what we're seeking.
That would be good, thank you.
As Ms. Smith stated, it is a split-zone parcel. It's half residential, half commercial in the front half. As we happened to be here at the Planning Commission the last time, when Gilmore, your zoning consultants were here, they talked about the fact that, you know, one of the things they want to get rid of around the township are parcels like this that are split between two zoning districts. Because it's essentially taken basement left, back half of this property, that it's paying taxes on, but isn't able to really use. The other thing that Ms. Smith touched on is the fact that it is a, it's a convenience store gas station. With the recent zoning change that the Board made, the gas station use with the convenience store is now a nonconforming use within the township, within the C1, as well as we figured out that the convenience store use is technically a nonconforming use as well, because while it is small, it is outside of the range. You have a range in your ordinance that says 3,000 to 5,500 square feet. His store's 1,500 and some odd square feet. So right now, if he were to expand under the current ordinance of the 25% limit for nonconformity, he could expand by 394 square feet, which is basically nothing. If it weren't for these nonconformities, there is the Section 84-5 in your ordinance that allows for split-zone parcels for the least restrictive use to be allowed to be expanded into the more restrictive use side, up to 50 feet. That's where the plan that we had came from. So we were originally going to operate under that option, and then realized that the zoning had changed and whatnot, now we're a nonconforming use, so it's limited us. Any more in the convenience store world, and as evidenced probably by the Wawa application that's pending in front of the township, the industry standard now is 5,000 to 6,000 square feet for a convenience store. My client has a 1,500 square foot, and none of the things on this property are his fault. He didn't split-zone the property, he didn't create these nonconforming uses, he just simply owns this property. He's been put in this situation. One of the things we're gonna be arguing to the zoning hearing board is that, under Pennsylvania law, the courts have allowed for more than that 25%, or whatever the threshold may be in the municipality, if it is for the purpose of essentially allowing that nonconforming use to survive and to keep up and modernize with its clients. And that's what we're gonna be asking the zoning hearing board to do, is, otherwise, this plan would have been allowed, weren't for the nonconformities under the zoning ordinance, and we're asking for what really amounts to, ultimately, the actual square footage is 5,500, however, a lot of that is gonna be basement, that he's gonna put in for storage. The actual store that you'll see is 3,995 or so, just under 4,000 square feet. So really, what we're gonna do is we're gonna bring this store into conformity with the ordinance, and we're really creating a mid-size convenience store with the associated parking. We've had meetings with the neighbors, because obviously, to the right of it and to the north of it, there are neighbors, and it does butt up against a residential district. One of the things we did, and I don't have the pointer, but prior to the last, yeah, thank you. Make me stand all the way over there. Get me all the way over there. One of the things we did was, after talking with the neighbors, trying to be the least amount impactful upon the neighbors over here, there is gonna be, these are trees, and there's gonna be fence line to create a buffer between them. We originally, under the zoning ordinance, we would need to put in 48 parking spaces. We don't believe that we need anywhere near that, really. The international traffic engineers numbers for a super convenience store put the numbers more in like 33, and that's what we have here. We originally had about six more spots over here, but in an effort, and that was where Shelby was saying that the meeting with the Planning Commission was sort of mixed, but also productive. One of the things we wanted to bounce off them was the idea of, would they have a problem if we got rid of these parking spaces? We didn't feel like we really needed them, and really, they would just be pointing towards the neighboring house. So we felt less parking, less activity on this end of the property was better. So we removed them, but we still have 33 spots total, which we believe, under the IT standards, is more than enough, should be planning, and otherwise, we're looking to expand the store.
So, just a quick question on the IT calculation. So, the 33 parking spots, is that based on the total square footage of the building, or does it exclude the footage of the basement, since that's not actually part of the retail sale operation?
So your ordinance goes by so many spaces per square feet, et cetera, that has a ratio. The IT more has categories of, basically, certain size stores. So the size store that we have, the 4,000, falls within what they call a super convenience store, and they recommend, I forget, I don't have the numbers, I'll find me out, present them to the zoning hearing board or our engineer, but it calculates out to, based on our store, around 33 spots.
Okay.
So that's what we feel like we're basing it in realistic numbers, and there's no way on this lot, frankly, that we would be able to fit 48 spots and also build a building.
Because construction's being done with stormwater, engineering practices play into this? They'd have to modify the property?
They're gonna do it by all the current ordinances at the time they apply.
Okay, and what would that consist of visually?
Most likely, it'd probably be underground, but it's whether they are actually...
Yeah, that's what I mean, is there any plans for what that may look like?
No, that would be a question for engineer, I don't have a lot of details on that. However, at the same time, we did reserve this area here for stormwater.
Which area? Oh, okay.
Because right now, because of the age of the property, this entire front is paved end to end. There's no stormwater controls at all.
Right, correct.
So it's completely paved, and then they're not paved at all.
Right.
So yeah, because we're adding a pervase, we would have to put in stormwater controls. And as part of the reason we, besides trying to be less impactful on the neighbor, it also allowed for that much less of pervase on that side of the property.
I'll just note that this would, if approved by the zoning hearing board, this will still have to go through the land development process.
This is a land development question, but since we're on the topic, do you know if the stormwater on the front of the property drains onto South High Street, or does it drain to this field at the back today?
Do you know? I'm not sure. I do know, if you go out to the property, this is the current, this is the line, there is a little bit of a down slope right here.
Right.
So I'm guessing a certain amount of it goes this way across the property.
Okay, as I said, it's more a question in joint land development, but...
Just a clarification, this has to go through not just land development, but also conditional use as well?
No.
Well, it's not a coordinate, it's already started.
If I was going under the, if I had the nonconformity, and I was going through the other plan, I think you would have to give a discussion exception.
Uh, no, it's, it would be conditional use, but I would defer to the solicitor on that, because it's already an existing use that's under operation currently.
Right, where you are right now, you're gonna need, you're pursuing a variance?
Yeah.
Go to land development.
Right.
So, do we need conditional use?
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I know the last time we were here, we talked about the ingress and egress. Right now, the way that you access the property is off High Street, right? You're just gonna go onto it, right?
Yeah, we're not touching anything along High Street.
Right.
And this driveway here will remain, this one will be added.
But that will be added, the second one is gonna be added.
We looked at trying to get rid of one of these, we felt that for trucks coming to make deliveries, it's helpful to have this ability to kind of navigate that.
So is one in and one out, or are they both?
I think they'll both, they'll both be, I think, two lane, in and out, yeah.
So you said you'd talked with neighbors, you already contacted the neighbors, so I presume one of their biggest concerns was this new entrance to the property on East Roads there, right?
I mean, generally, I think a lot of them just have lived with this for 30-some years, being a grass patch, and don't want anything on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mrs., I'm forgetting to flanking out her name back here, she's concerned, we talked to her about the idea of the buffering, and she's concerned because this is loading zone here. The, yeah, there was a neighbor over here who did voice some concerns about the driveway here, and the fact that people would be coming down a little bit further into the neighborhood.
Where's the loading zone now?
It's, well, there really isn't one, because it predates, essentially, I think deliveries blow up here right now.
Where's the tanks?
Where's the underground storage tanks?
Right in the front, I think.
Okay, so are you gonna have enough turnaround for the delivery truck to come in now with the new building? The turnaround?
Yeah, I mean, this is all parking lot right here, so they can navigate through here.
Just to follow up on what I was saying, so it's a shame the engineer isn't here, because to me, having a single in and out on East Roads and rearranging the parking would be a better solution. So I know you said you'd looked at it, but you did come up with this design, I just think a little more forethought on it could potentially get a better solution there. Especially with that entrance that's now gonna be, you know, that is right at the exit, basically, of East Roads onto High Street. If you could combine those two into more, a little further away from the exit, a single entrance in and out, single entrance exit would be better, I think.
I mean, that's something we could keep looking at.
Again, it's more land development, but for the ZHP, it won't be a consideration, but I think it would help with a better solution overall, just my opinion.
Okay.
I suppose no traffic study's been done with your proposal at this point?
No, I mean, this, yeah, at this point, we're in the training, so we haven't yet.
John, John, they will not have to do a traffic study, they'll do the fact that square footage.
Oh yeah, what's the total square footage then with the addition?
So the overall total square footage will be 5,500, however, the actual store that you will see above ground is just under 4,000.
So where do you think the square footage is?
Another 1,500 is gonna be a basement.
It's not basically total, it's like basically a little bit of a, it's like... It's just the addition itself that doesn't exceed by now.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Long? Before we state our position on this, is there anybody here in attendance who is here because of this particular agenda item? Yes, Ed?
Yeah, but I have no comment, so I was at the meeting that they...
Okay.
It was productive.
Thank you. So does the Board have any strong feelings either for or against this particular proposal that's gonna go to the ZHP?
I think there's a lot of moving parts here, I'd like to see the zoning hearing board do its job, and just be neutral.
Okay, anyone else?
I agree.
Very good, so, Board says good luck, and good to the ZHP?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll move on to the second application that will go into the zoning hearing board next Monday, and that is Application Number 1, 2025, which is 1125 Willner Drive. Shelby described this as requiring a variance from Section 8313 of the zoning ordinance, which requires a 30-foot rear yard setback, and the variance being sought is in order to construct a detached garage on the property, which would be, would need a variance against that 30-foot setback. What is the actual setback that would exist if the variance was granted?
So, as, I'm so sorry, my voice is, sorry.
Is anybody here in support of this application?
We're good.
Okay, you're the property owners?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
So, in an effort to explain this application, this dark building right here is the proposed garage, and by the way, that's Mr. and Mrs. Rem, Mr. and Mrs. Rem, if I misspeak, please feel free to correct me. They are gonna be 10 feet from both the rear yard property line and the side yard property line, where 30 feet would be required here. Inside of their application, they did have a conversation with the rear neighbor who had written a letter of support for this project, which has been included with their zoning hearing board package, but in essence, they just need relief from this 30-foot rear etc. to be 10 feet.
And that rear property, the driveway to access that property is what passes by the garage, the proposed garage, is that correct?
That is correct.
So the other property on this side is what is more than 30 feet away from the garage?
I'm sorry, the black square is the... This black square is going to be the proposed garage. Okay.
Just some background on the house itself, it's the historic house in that neighborhood, farmhouse, and that neighborhood was built around it, and the property behind us that we are asking for the variance from is the old carriage house of our house. So it's kind of a, you know, a funky division of the lot.
So it's your house, the historic house?
Yes.
Okay.
And they divided it into two, before the neighborhood was filled with the 27 homes, the driveway went straight out to five points from the carriage house. When they built the new neighborhood, the carriage house became a separate property, and they put an L-shaped driveway to come up around behind our property to the carriage house, which is a separate property.
Okay.
And this garage, if your proposal will not impede that in any way?
No, it's going right on top of the existing driveway.
So it looks like the garage will go in an estimation of right here.
Correct.
Right. And then this is the neighbor that had written the letter in support.
And you have no garage today, no park? Any questions from the Board? Any feelings, any?
I think that if you have your neighbor's support, that's really great, and obviously, I think I'm always supportive of homeowners needing to have the things that they want on their property, so I support neutral.
Yeah, well, it sounds like the Boards doesn't have any position, we just wish you well at the zoning hearing board, we make the case there. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Discussion on Possible Adoption of Resolution Number 10, 2025, Accepting the Deed of Dedication for Additional Right-of-Way on Ashbridge Road. Okay, so Chris, would you like to introduce this one?
Hi, I'm Mr. Chairman. So before the Board this evening is Resolution Number 10-2025. This resolution would approve additional right-of-way along Ashbridge Road. The dedication of additional right-of-way was a part of the subdivision and land development plan for the Kirkland Wood subdivision, which was approved by the Board on April 2nd, 2024, through the adoption of Resolution Number 12-2024. There was a condition, Condition Number Four on the aforementioned resolution, which required the dedication of additional right-of-way in a form satisfactory to the Township Solicitor. It's also indicated as General Note Number 10 on the approved plan. The deed of dedication before the Board has been reviewed by the Solicitor's Office and found to be acceptable. I believe it's also been reviewed by Brian as well, and he found it to be acceptable as well.
Thanks, Chris. Is there any questions from the Board on this resolution?
This is just gonna be codifying the right-of-way, which would be 25 feet from the center line to the eastern side of the road.
That's correct.
What about on the western side of the road? Is that codified in some way or another that there's a 25-foot right-of-way on the other side of the road?
So I think your sound would probably specify something to you, but it hasn't been developed, so I don't know what the right-of-way width on the other side of the road would be.
The right-of-way width is 33 feet currently, so 16 and a half.
The part way?
Right-of-way.
Just the right-of-way?
Right-of-way is standard of 16 and a half, unless additional right-of-way is offered during land development. In this case, the title line goes to the center of the road, so they're giving us, they're giving up the piece of property that's over the current road to the 25-foot as required.
So we have 25 feet from the center line of the road going east, but haven't going to the western side?
16 and a half.
See, all right, so it's not the same.
So you have a 41 and a half foot line right-of-way?
Yes.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay, I would make the motion to approve Resolution Number 10, 2025, Accepting the Dedication of Additional Road Right-of-Way for Ashbridge Road as described.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Tina. Are there any questions from anyone in attendance or the Board on the motion? Okay, then we'll take a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes 5-0. Next on the agenda is Item Number Six, Discussion on Possible Approval of Resolution Number 11, 2025, Authorizing the Destruction of Certain Records of West Goshen Township pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual. And, I see the Board's gonna introduce this one, so I'll read out the introduction for it. So before the Board this evening is Proposed Resolution Number 11, 2025. This would authorize the destruction of certain records of the township. A list of the records was provided to the Board and in the agenda materials for destruction of the Finance Department records in accordance with the Municipal Records Manual. A resolution from the Board of Supervisors is required prior to destruction in accordance with Act 428 of 1968. Does the Board have any questions on the resolution?
I have a couple of questions. What makes a document eligible for destruction? Is there a certain timeline that has to be hold of then in order to be eligible for destruction?
The Pennsylvania Records Manual sets forth specific timelines for different types of records. It could range anywhere from two years in some instances to permanently. So those are set forth by the PA Records Manual.
Okay. And are these documents recorded digitally?
Some are, some aren't.
Which ones are?
I can't answer that.
Or, for example, the police reports, for example. What do they consist of? Are they recorded digitally before they're destroyed?
So those are not, those are not like police reports from incident reports, they're finance records, so they would be like billing and things of that nature?
Yeah, just so...
Just so everyone's aware, the actual records that are up for disposal are from 2017 for the main, which are payables, so again, these are all finance records, deposit books for waste and recycling, sewer and... records, deposit books for waste and recyclings, sewer and general fund receipts, utility bill postings for the proof reports for the fourth quarter, four quarters, year end finance reports, miscellaneous deposits, as Chris described, finance records that are listed as police reports, and then again, more utility billing, posting, deposits. There is also some records from twenty one and twenty two, December, the one year from December of twenty one through December of twenty two, which are paid delinquent accounts. So they're all finance record. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, would someone like to make the motion to approve resolution number eleven, twenty twenty five?
I'll make it. I'll second.
Thank you, Tina and Nate. Are there any questions or comments on it? Doug?
So the earliest is two thousand seventeen.
Yes.
So these will be records that are now eight years old this year. And again, they're just finance paper records related to mostly utility bill postings, year end reports, miscellaneous deposits, receipts, et cetera.
Nothing before that.
Nothing before that.
Well, anything anything before that was previously authorized for destruction.
We do this every year.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five zero. Next is agenda item number seven, which is discussion and possible possible approval of an agreement with Charge Point for Cloud and Maintenance Services. Chris, could you introduce this one?
Hi, I'm Mr. Chairman. Before the board this evening is proposed service agreement with Charge Point for Cloud Services and Maintenance. This is associated with the electric vehicle charging stations that are at the township municipal complex as well as West Ocean Community Park. The proposed agreement would be for three years and would cover the two public charging stations owned by the township. The provisions are related to cloud service access pertaining to such items as software updates, scheduling of charging, and dashboard access. It would also provide maintenance provisions that would that would be an extended warranty to cover parts, labor, and provide support. The total amount is seven thousand six hundred dollars. I did also speak with our contact at Charge Point about looking at an annual option, and they did say that that was a possibility. So if the board wishes to go with a one-year option, which would run until June fourteenth, twenty twenty six, that price would be two thousand six hundred dollars. So it'd be fourteen hundred dollars for the cloud-based service and twelve hundred dollars for the maintenance and management.
Thanks, Chris. Does the board have any questions? Just a comment for myself. I actually Charge Point is a company that has been struggling a little bit recently. And I, as a matter of principle, I would prefer just to have a one-year contract with them. So I'm more supportive of the option to do the twenty six hundred dollar option. Does the board have a different view or any questions?
I mean, I have a question. So if we opt to do that, how many is this year, I guess, preparing to look at another?
I don't think we have to. I mean, it could be perfectly fine. It's just a case of our risk exposure to a financial three-year future obligation with a company that may or may not continue to be in business as is. So I don't think we need to change anything going forward. It's just a case of limiting our exposure financially.
Actually, the end date on this is June fourteenth of twenty six. Okay, it's six to have, okay, so it's a year and a half, okay.
Just following from that question, what are the options?
That's when it expires.
It wouldn't it wouldn't the current one doesn't kick in until June of this year.
Okay.
Just follow up from that. What other options do we have for the township? Can we get another vendor to do this?
I think that your option would be to replace the charging stations with another vendor who offers a similar software.
Sure. By the fact it's Charge Point, you have to go with Charge Point.
And I would just hypothetically speaking, Sean, if they were to go on here next year in two years, we'd still have to do that.
Anyway.
Still need to find another vendor. So what I'm saying is.
Unless unless they were acquired, because it's an asset, it's a business. So someone could come in and say, we're taking over, and it's new X Y Z company. And well, we're on a current agreement.
I'm supportive of the one-year agreement for sure. I also think we should put it on our G L S, so we'll get some other options, just so that we know what else out there if we have to make a decision.
I think the more important to me right now is, are we intending to purchase more charging stations the next?
We have two in the project.
So this year, we need to decide what direction we're gonna go in, Chris, so.
Yeah, also, this is a twenty six hundred dollar if we go with the one-year contract. Is there any way we can have Charge Point look into folding this into the charge per usage? I mean, I don't understand why the township should have to absorb this cost. We're providing it as a service of people pay for that service who may utilize the charge.
I can ask them about that.
So do we, if you have those two, well, one follow up specifically, the last one, the question John at Mr. Hellman asked, do we need to defer taking a vote on this? I mean, it's not up for another month or two anyway, right?
Until June.
Until June.
I mean, I can or can approve a contingent on the on speaking with Charge Point about rolling this into their rate costs for charging. I mean, I just won't sign it until we get the answer to that question.
Yeah. I mean, it's not a fatal flaw anyway, is it, John, from your perspective? If we could, you'd like to.
We maintain them, that's for sure. And yet, there should be a way for them to deal with that into their charge.
Okay. So then we can decide today to take an approval motion, and Chris, you can advise the board as to whether we can roll that into the cost this charge to users.
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there a board member willing to make a motion then to approve a one-year agreement with Charge Point in the amount of two thousand six hundred dollars for cloud and maintenance services?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Nate. Is there a second? Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? Doug?
So when we buy these charges, we're locked into that company for the services?
So these charges, my understanding is these EV chargers, there are networks. You've got the Tesla Supercharger Network, you've got Charge Point Network, there are others out there. There's quite a few of them. So it's a tough market.
So are there any charges you can buy to buy chargers that are what's called open architecture, where you won't be locked in? They'll be compatible?
Yeah, that's a good question. So that's the question. The other action we gave, Chris, was to investigate. We have two in the budget this year to purchase. We'll have to have a review of what would make most sense for longevity and make sure we're not locked into a particular company if we can. Remember, these were purchased three years ago with a grant from the Volkswagen diesel problem, and they there's funds from that settlement were used to by the township to purchase the actual state, these chargers stations.
Mr. Chairman, even at this point, it might have been five years ago.
Five years ago, okay. Good question there. Thank you, Doug. Any other questions? Yes, sir. Could you just state your name, please, to the record?
Mike Green.
Okay.
It's a level two charger, right?
Yes.
A lot of towns that I've been through with charge, they're free. I don't know how much they don't draw much juice. And I can have time limit on it, but just, I mean, for two thousand bucks for a year, I don't even know if they draw that much energy. And I've never hardly, I mean, for people who use the one that's here.
Yes, the one in the park, I think, a little more than the one here, but this one is used too.
You can find out how much energy, I mean, would the township pay for it?
Okay, that's a good question.
Instead of being there for the contracts and playoffs, just cut it all off. Charge yourself probably uses less electricity. We're using right here.
Okay.
If you think about it.
Wouldn't we still have to contract with them, though, to, like, do the cloud maintenance?
You buy your own charger, put it right in there, plug it right in, just go for the wiring's already.
Oh, you're saying get rid of the Charge Point once and get our own?
Well, for a simple thing, a lot of towns I've seen in the Midwest are free. You just plug in there, it takes forever, because they're level two, so really ridiculous.
I would love to provide it.
Level two takes forever. So you have to park there for two or three days to get a full charge. Supercharger, like a Wawa, takes a half hour.
Level ones take a couple of days, level twos do not take a couple of days.
Level two?
Level two is.
Oh, level one, well, yes.
About a half hour or something. Chief has a level two.
Level twos are about twenty five, twenty six miles per hour.
I think it's a good question. So what we'll do is we'll just ask Chris to look into, you know, how much of these are actually being used, what how much how much electricity is being used, what options we have, how much it would cost us to disassociate with a vendor and just have it run by the township.
I can pull the I can pull the data usage data for for twenty twenty four.
I'm sorry, what was your name again, sir?
I'm Mike Green.
Mike Green, okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Would you be able to explain to each user?
Oh, yeah. Each of the, so if you go into the dashboard for Charge Point, each of the different charging stations are identified on there, and the ones that are used only by our staff are identified accordingly, and then we have to do the republic.
Any other questions? Okay, ready to take the vote? All in favor say aye.
For the one-year contract.
Yes, that was the motion. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five zero. All right, moving right along. We're on agenda item number eight, which is reports for the month of January twenty twenty five. And we start with the police report presented by Chief Michael Carroll.
Thank you. The report from the police department for January twenty twenty five, we responded to two thousand two hundred and two calls for service. Thirty of those were alarms, and two of those alarms were found in the valley. Responded to ninety one accidents, twenty one of which were reportable, and we drove a total thirteen thousand one hundred point seven miles. Performed extra traffic enforcement on South High Street, Mound Road, Taylor Bike, Warren Road, North New Street, Brinkley Road, Grove Road, North Vicente Road, Falcon Lane. Aside from our normal monthly trainings, Officer Asen, Officer Giglio attended Nick Sappuppi, which is truck inspection. Officer Graham and Sergeant Holman attended negotiator training, and Detective Sergeant Torres and Detective Edwards attended high-impact supervision training. Of the alarms that I mentioned earlier, two or excuse me, one was of the highest violation level. We had one company who had six violations in one month at the beginning of the year. We did go out and visit with them and make sure they're understanding what's going on and see if we could help them with their problem. They blamed it on a cleaner and hopefully it cleaned it up. And we performed twenty assists to other departments for a total of about twelve hours, and we received seven assists from other departments. That's the report from January. Do I answer any questions?
So thank you, Chief. Is there questions for the chief?
Who was the high flyer of the alarms? Is that city?
I don't know that I went out there in public, but.
We actually had six violations in one month.
Six violations within January, between eleven and twenty.
Chief, just wondering, our mileage was almost halved what it was last year. That's pretty good.
Well, anyway, I look at it, it's been, the winter time has been not one of us for sick, and it has been for everybody around the county. We've got a lot of people out sick.
Gotcha.
I have a question on the assist from. And it was something that looked a little different than usual, and that was an assist from South Euclid P D for terroristic threats. Is there something you can just explain on that, or?
Off the top of my head, I can't, I can look it up, but it's probably something where we called him to assist us with either some information or contacting someone, but I can look it up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is somebody here who has a question for the chief? Ed?
Yeah. On the six frequent violators, do they apply substantially?
Yes.
So there's a gradient, the first two are three in a year. That's both my favorite here.
First two are three, the third is a hundred, the fourth and fifth are two fifty each, and the sixth and seventh are five, I mean, beyond are five hundred.
Can you give us an update on the process as it's proceeding for the hiring of a new officer?
We're going through interviews right now.
This week?
Yes.
Okay.
And when do you anticipate getting close to being making an offer, do you think?
I would hope by the second week in March-ish, third week in March.
How many candidates are you interviewing?
Eighteen.
So a couple backed out, so they're either eighteen or nineteen.
Okay, that's quite a lot.
Yes, that's a lot.
It's a good problem to have.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief?
I have a question. My house is down on South New Street between North and South Campus, and I've been looking into it now for the last year and a half about increased traffic, the speeding on New Street. They'll be stopping at Stop Sign at Trinity Drive. And I'm looking into finding how we can put a speed box perhaps, or congested parking meters to charge everybody more money to pay for electrical outlets that are pre-charge points, because they're driving back and forth too much. I mean, it's it's that's just this morning, people flying off the top of New Street right through the stop sign. And the police have been there a few times, like two times in the last year, not done there all the time.
Right.
But I've talked to the traffic.
That was gonna be my suggestion, Sergeant Kreiser?
Yeah, we were there. I was there for the last one, and I didn't know what I had to do, so something before the board.
No, no, just Sergeant Kreiser.
Because he's not, when I'm gonna do it for another three months.
Not gonna do what?
He's not gonna have another meeting for so far.
No, don't wait. Call him. Yeah, call him.
Oh, I already did a survey back in the beginning of the semester.
Okay.
And batteries don't work in coal or something like that. They painted new lines, and I think it's all gone by the wayside now. I would suggest you give him a call.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there any kind of way, and I forgot, I was trying to come up with any of them some way, but is there any way that the police can put something that makes it seem like there's like a speed trap, like almost like a decoy, to make people slow down and not have an officer there? Like, I think somebody said one time they put like blue and red lights.
I've never seen that. It's not saying you're wrong.
I heard it, and I was like, that's really interesting that we wouldn't use that method more often to make people slow down. Because there's something that we could put at Trinity that would make, I'm assuming it's students that are doing the driving.
Or that change the stop sign to yield, because nobody stopped. Very few people stop. I mean, more times than not, it's like, and they're doing like thirty five or forty miles an hour. When we talk about it, I think they're allowing eleven over the speed limit.
Well, the model, you have to be eleven, you'd say.
So that means they're doing twenty five plus elevens if they're getting up there. And that's within the limit. I'm sure they're doing forty five to in such a short distance to the red light. And the other problem is the red light, how is that always discussed? Because that backs up all, we know, that.
That's a township road, right?
Yes, I believe so. That red light's up for to be looked at, I think, but it's a combination of Westchester and Ross.
Yeah, that that intersection is being totally redesigned. I think they're going out for bid this year. Whether there'll be the first phase this summer and the second phase next is is up in the air.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I got an email this morning from Brian Dagle, the attorney for the for the Westchester. We're looking to bid it in two weeks, and this summer will be utility and next summer will be the actual signal and reconfiguration of the intersection. So we're doing two phases.
It's not gonna be a circle?
No.
There's gonna be a red light as well.
There'll be a red light, but it's gonna be configured differently with different signals and widening the intersection for turn lanes and better and better movement through the intersection.
Even during football games, if somebody at their turn to switch on and off due to traffic, because you can't get out and you can't go to Cambridge Bowl anymore, and I've been going for a while, you can't go through Roswell, but that's all no left turn, no right turn, that's a mess. And the only option you have is going south to the football field, which is a nightmare, or try and get, wait for, I don't know, a long time, get to the red light.
It sounds like Sergeant Kreiser should have a.
I'm sure there's an existence, but I don't know how.
Well, it sounds like he just did something to review the situation. So he's gonna be at the next meeting here, I believe, right? Isn't he coming to talk to the board about these?
That's the plan, but there's that's the plan, but they're still working on their study, so it may get pushed back.
Okay. I'm trying to encourage you to come to another meeting, because we'll actually have the traffic sergeant here, and we'll be discussing some other things, and it'd be good to have a conversation. The board can hear it as well, the full board, so.
I have to come up?
Not the traffic meeting, but we just because of another issue that we have to table for the traffic sergeant, he's gonna be here in front of the board at least in a, if not next meeting, the meeting after.
All of the people on the website.
Yeah.
I would, I would encourage to call him to.
Yeah, you should call him now, anyway.
Yeah, he does respond very quickly to either an email or or a phone call.
I had, we had nice meeting the other, I were there.
Yeah, I was there. Yeah, it was a good meeting, but he's very responsive. So I would give him a call and not wait three months.
Or an email.
Yeah, if you if you've got specific things that you believe should have been happening out of that meeting that you're not aware of what the status is, then that's what we should follow up with.
I don't know. They cover a broad range of stuff, so.
Where is Trinity Drive?
So if you take South New Street.
Yep.
On Rosedale South.
Right there. So if I go on Rosedale, if I'm going, say, west on Rosedale, and I come to New Street, I make a left, yes, I'd be right. And that would be the first right, I guess, Trinity Drive would be here, the building there.
If I pass with the church?
Yeah. I just, I did see, I tried, I tried. I just, I did see, I travel that way every day, and I saw a cruiser there this morning at his lights on. I mean, everything over there, especially in Roslyn, because I live on the other side on High Street, so I do go down Spruce, and then meander over to New every day, and it's all relative to the college.
Absolutely.
And the kids, and especially the do not enter there, you know, where, no right turn from?
I don't, people just don't, I don't get it, you know, they just, they do it anyway, and it's constant.
Well, I don't know how, I've heard stories about how that came about, because there was a Ford member that lived down on Spruce Avenue.
Ted Murphy?
I heard from him.
We're releasing all the secrets tonight.
Oh, that's not a secret.
And he dumped everything on me.
That's public record.
And like I said, I haven't been living here for twenty years, but it's ridiculous how bad it is now, and when it summers here, it's pretty nice, there's nobody, college is out, it's pretty nice.
The Board's really dependent on the experts on this, so whether that's Sergeant Kreiser or traffic people, engineers, et cetera, you know, we would need him to recommend that something, a full, bigger pitch needs to be looked at, and, you know, like Brian says, the whole intersection, New Street and Rosedale is gonna be reconfigured in the next couple of years, so if there is changes planned for it, whether that will help the traffic flow at least is hopefully gonna be one, good outcome for it.
Like we talked about at the traffic meeting, flashing signs, you get permission from the noon center, and you can put threats on there that speed bumps are coming, if they don't start paying attention to the rules of the road, which is twenty-five miles an hour, maybe twenty-six if you're going downhill, and they come to a complete stop. I mean, I can't get out of my driveway, because that's how fast they're going, if they stop, it's difficult, if they not stop, and then I'm surprised I haven't hit yet.
I totally believe in like decoy things being placed, like if I see, and I feel like I've seen signs before when I'm driving that says like speed trap.
Part of my driveway.
Maybe that actually is a speed trap, but I slow down, like if there's a sign that I'm about to, you know?
I've talked to campus police, apparently they can't do anything for traffic. They sit there, I mean, I see them sitting up on Roseville Avenue and watching across the wall people, but I don't know what their jurisdiction is for these.
Sounds like it's more intentional looking into native, yeah? Okay, thank you, Chief. Any other questions for you?
I have one.
Yes, Nate?
Chief, I was, don't tell my doctor, but I was at the Popeyes', and sitting in the parking lot for about fifteen minutes, and I saw three cars making left-hand turns where it says no right-hand turn only.
On the pale light?
Yeah, on the pale light. Is there anything we can do about that?
So the only question I have, Darren, you may know, I don't know if that sign has been, is it the organs or not?
One of them. That's the one, isn't it?
No, I think that was one that was gonna be addressed.
It says no left turn.
No left turn.
It does say no left turn now.
You know, the one on pale light where no left turn into it is not the organs, but I'm not sure if anybody, the ones coming out of that are in the organs or not. They weren't brought to my attention, they were a warning. Okay, so we'll check the three of them in some way.
Okay, thank you.
If they're not, then obviously we can address it at this upcoming meeting, so...
Sure.
Okay, thank you. The information is also available from the fire companies and Good Fellowship ambulances. If the Board has any questions on that, then please let Chris know, he can follow up with them, or follow up with them directly yourself. All right, so now we're on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is Board of Supervisor Announcements. To start at my right, with Ashley, you have any announcements, Ashley?
The only announcement I have, and I don't know why I'm announcing it, because it's all sold out, but my husband is giving a Planetarium show at Westchester University this Thursday night. We plan to do more in the future, they're incredibly popular, so keep your eye out for Planetarium shows, probably be doing two or three a year.
Awesome. Thank you.
Where do you find that out? Is it on Westchester website?
Should be on our website, on our Parks and Recreation page, yeah.
And it's all...
Of course, it's on social media, I don't know if you follow us on...
I'm not real big on that, but it's nothing to do with, is it with the university?
Yeah, so he's a professor at the university, and, yeah, so it's through them, but it's through the township, and it's free, and we also put it, I think, in our newsletter. So you'll see the next one, hopefully, if you follow it, here on our newsletter, to get our newsletter.
Do they update it? No, I'm just getting on the portal now, but how often is that up? Every day?
Which?
For your announcements?
The e-newsletter goes out once, goes out monthly, it goes out the third Friday of every month. It's just that...
You talking about the township webpage?
The webpage, that's what I found about you guys tonight.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
It's updated, it's updated as it needs to be updated, so it's updated fairly regularly.
So your next meeting with the traffic policeman will be, I don't see it on there, when I look...
That's May fourteenth. May fourteenth at nine AM, no, May.
The traffic meeting with, you talking about the Traffic Safety Committee, or the meeting with the Board with the...
What you were talking about.
So that'll be our meetings at the first and third Tuesday of every month. Depending on Sergeant Kreiser's availability, it'll either be March the fourth, or if he needs more time, it would be the eighteenth.
And, sir, all the, all the meeting dates, if you go on the website, are on the calendar, there's a separate calendar for meetings and events, and then the materials are under the Government section where it says Agendas and Minutes, you can see the materials there, and those are posted the Friday before the meeting.
I just want to add to Ashley's comment that if anybody is not going to attend and has signed up, if they would please call Ken and let him know, because the last one was sold out supposedly, but the, that Planetarium was empty, so, and there's a wait list, so I'd really appreciate if people could, you know, notify somebody that they can't make it for whatever reason. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Ashley. John, your announcements?
Sure. On Monday, February the third, I participated in the land planning committee meeting with the consultant, Delmore Associates. We had further discussion of the zoning ordinance rewrite, specifically review of regulations for zoning districts and affordable, attainable housing. The next meeting is scheduled to be on April the twenty-first, in which time we'll be discussing design standards, and we'll be setting up a meeting in the meantime with Penrood developers before, and before this meeting to explore affordable or attainable housing options. On Tuesday, February the fourth, I attended a virtual meeting with PennDOT, with including PennDOT representative, township staff, and Parkway Plaza owner and traffic engineer to discuss the highway occupancy permit process. We discussed the access and egress for residents of Yorktown Road and also issues regarding the two oh two southbound off-ramp. More discussion following with PennDOT. On Tuesday, February the fourth, I also attended a webinar on the Walk Works Grant Program. This is for overall planning projects such as for comprehensive plans, not so much for construction work, for specific project planning, such as for the walkway along Airport Road, which would be connecting with the East Goshen Walkway Trail System. Then on Wednesday, February the twelfth, I attended a meeting regarding traffic issues concerning the pedestrian crossway between the East and Tugat campuses and the playing fields across the street. Representative Piyelli, the East Goshen Township manager Derek Davis, the East High School principal Dr. Graham, the facilities manager for the Westchester area school district, Wayne Bistro were there, and we discussed the different options about how to proceed. At this point, it's really in the ballpark of East Goshen Township and the Westchester area school district to come up with some kind of plan to address, more to follow up on this. Then on Wednesday, February the twelfth, I attended the Fire and EMS Coalition meeting, which I'm sure you'll talk about more in detail with Tina. Thursday, February the thirteenth, I attended the ribbon cutting of the refurbished wine and spirits store in East Goshen, in the Goshen Plaza. Then on Tuesday, February the eighteenth, attended the Solar Array Project monthly progress meeting with Sean, and also met with Chief Carroll with the monthly Board liaison meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you, John. Nate?
Yeah, Thursday, January sixteenth, I attended the Historic Commission meeting, that's it for me.
Thank you, Nate. Tina?
Yeah, on January fourteenth, I attended the Chester County EAC SAC meeting, and it basically was all the SAC in Chester County to share information on county initiatives and discuss ways the county can support the environmental effects of local municipality groups, so it was very, very well-attended and informative. On January twenty-second, there's a chamber event where Craig Smith, who was a QVC host and professional speaker, was very inspirational in speaking. January twenty-third, we had an EMS Zoom, which we went over the Montgomery County EMS model slash study, to study the planning and recommended, covered, there was four areas that made recommendations with. January twenty-eighth was the SAC meeting. January thirtieth was a DEM reproductive rates, very informative, where we had some of our commissioners there, elected officials there. January thirtieth also had a Zoom with the Westchester University president Laura. We went over new goals moving forward for the university, and they wanted input on how we can help them add to their goals, and solicited input from the audience, and we developed a shared vision moving forward. So she was coming out to the community to help achieve her goals, just coming in as a new president. February sixth, there's a crime victim event at the Historic Center, and then on February twelfth, there's a Fire and Coalition meeting where we basically talked about a couple of norm issues, one of them being the fifty thousand dollar grant that was given to us by Senator Carolyn Cametta, which will be used for the emergency blocking equipment. We have a subcommittee now that's going to work out the logistics of that, and then we talked about some other topics also. We, I also attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony on February thirteenth for the newly remodeled liquor store that's in the West Goshen Shopping Center. That was very interesting, it's actually very nice, they have a tasting bar in there now, and they put on a nice affair that day. February thirteenth, I also attended a meeting with Good Fellowship, which was on the future planning. They have some things that they're looking to do for this year, so that was about a two-and-a-half-hour meeting discussing that in addition to their budget. That's it.
Thank you, Tina. Just a few announcements from myself. The Board met in executive session on January the twenty-fourth with the Township manager to discuss monthly performance management progress. We have two executive sessions, one on February the fourth and one just prior to this meeting today, to discuss a real estate legal matter. I attended the meeting that John described, related to the PennDOT HOP Parkway Shopping Center progress. I also attended the Solar Array Project meeting today. The project is on track to start sometime probably the second half of March, depending on when the panels will actually be delivered to the site, which is currently tentatively scheduled for mid-April, but we will get a firm date hopefully by the beginning of March, and the project is slated to be complete hopefully before a May fifteenth deadline. I also attended the Pension Committee meeting on January the twenty-second. In addition to the regular update we got on the investment performance from PNC, the committee also discussed a couple of items related to the administration of the funds, and in particular the option that was provided or suggested by the state auditor? I always get this wrong.
Pennsylvania Auditor General's Office.
Pennsylvania Auditor General's Office, that we actually have two plans that could be combined as the terms of the plans are identical, and it just creates additional administrative work. And then, just want to let people know that the West Goshen Sewer Authority submitted a total phosphorus monitoring data assessment report to the EPA. This is published on our webpage under the Sewer Authority site, page of the Township webpage, and this was a requirement under the settlement agreement that we have with EPA. We have a longstanding litigation with EPA, the Sewer Authority sued the EPA over the TMDL requirement for phosphorus discharge to Goose Creek, and as part of the journey that that's been on for the last decade, we installed this system at the treatment plant, which is performing really well, and the data assessment report describes the results that we've achieved. So the Board is now in EPA's court to respond to us. That concludes my announcements. Does anyone have any questions for the Board? Steve?
With regard to the solar system, are we still on track to get some of those grants we were looking at?
So the main grant that we, that we based the business case of the project on was the reimbursement from the Inflation Reduction Act of thirty percent of the total cost. The new administration in Washington has put a ninety-day freeze on all payments, so at this point, until the outcome of that review is known, we don't know what the fate of potential reimbursement will be for our project. We are moving ahead with the construction phase while that will be determined.
Just on that point, if we do not receive that reimbursement, we're looking at about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that the township will lose because of the actions done by the current administration.
Any other questions for the Board? Ed?
Yeah, I was for John or Sean, can you share a little light about Parkway?
Sure, there was a lot of discussion about Parkway, both on the residents along Yorktown and also the two oh two off-ramp. Now, talking about the residents off of Yorktown, there was discussion about putting a split-phase light there. So in other words, for those people leaving from, you know, where you live off of Yorktown, and making a right or left onto High Street, there will be a light there that will be activated upon, you know, a car approaching. So that's where the split-phase lighting will come into, but it's not settled as to whether or not they're gonna do that, but it was certainly an option. As far as the two oh two off-ramp, there's certainly discussion that has to be done with the PennDOT group, because they are planning to do some rather extensive changes in that area, so they want to find out exactly what they would be, and whether or not it's a possibility that the off-ramp from two oh two going southbound could be straightened, so that it would go straight into High Street rather than curbs as it is now, but again, nothing was decided there at that point, it's just a further discussion. So there will be further discussion with PennDOT and with township staff.
I see that exit maybe even being closed and the dot mode being put in, just based on like Delaware Valley Planning Commission, their plans, but it all costs money, and it impacts other areas, like, like Staten Avenue and northbound traffic, so it'll be interesting.
Let me just give you a little flavor as well, because I was attending the meeting as well, so this split-phase option of having, you know, a light at Yorktown was definitely something that was mentioned quite a lot, and PennDOT wanted to get their specialized signal folk into a technical meeting with the traffic engineer, so we were represented by a traffic engineer. Obviously, the developer, the traffic engineer was leading the session, so they will review the pros and cons of what a modernized, signalized intersection would look like, whether split-phase having an additional light at Yorktown makes sense overall, so that was definitely further work that is with the technical people. With regard to the off-ramp, my view is, is that the developer does not want to entertain because of that, because it requires the purchase of a parcel and substantial rework of the off-ramp, as you can imagine, it's quite a drop there. So there was pushback on our suggestion that that is a key aspect of this. There wasn't any read from PennDOT as to their views on it, and we don't know what their position will be, but I see that as something that it will be, in my opinion, will be unlikely to be changed during this process. Whether the long-term use of that off-ramp is affected by this bigger project that's down the road is kind of where most of the people on the call seem to want to punt the decision to, so I'm not holding my breath on that particular aspect of it, that's just my opinion.
I've seen the options like that was recommended, and, I mean, this was all written a couple of years ago already, but there's other impacts, you know?
Yeah, the timeline for that whole piece of work is indeterminate, in my opinion, I mean, it's probably been looked at quite a bit, but there's no firm commitment. I mean, I know they put out surveys and the rest of it, so you'd think there may be some momentum, but TBD.
As a resident, the key is, you know, for people like Mr. Crumb, Son, Travis, and myself, is to be able to get out on High Street safely, you know?
Yeah, the split-phase... Yeah, the split-phase signal might be a good option, but there's downsides to that too, so. Okay. Thanks, Mike. Any question? Any other questions up for the board? Okay, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is Township Manager's announcements. Chris?
Hi, this is Mr. Chairman. So the Township's monthly e-newsletter will be issued on Friday, February 21st. I am pleased to report that on January 27th, the Township's Finance Director and I met with representatives from the Kroll Bond Rating Agency to review the Township's annual surveillance report. It reviews the Township's financial standing as pertains to the general obligation notes that were previously issued. And I'm pleased to report that the Township's bond rating has been upgraded from AA+ to AAA. This is the highest rating that can be achieved. Copy of the report was previously provided to the board. I'll note that they highlighted the strong financial management structure and policies, including conservative budget and practices, a formal reserve balance policy, a history of ample unassigned general fund balances and liquidity, and a stable residential tax base with good commuter access to large diverse employment centers, supporting strong wealth and socioeconomic indicators. The report outlines that the Township's financial outlook is stable and notes their belief that we will continue to operate in a conservative manner while maintaining structurally balanced operations, strong reserves, and ample liquidity. I just want to commend everyone on the Township's team for making this upgrade possible.
I'd like to, my support and the support of the board to that, because this is not something that happens every day. AAA rating is very good. It means the township is in a fantastic financial position.
So moving on, in terms of ordinances that are under review, the landscaping requirements have were reviewed and finalized by the Sustainability Advisory Committee at their meeting on January 28th. This was to go before the Planning Commission at their meeting on February 11th, however, with the cancellation due to weather, it's going to be pushed to the March 11th meeting. And representatives from the SAC are going to attend that meeting. In terms of the historic resource ordinance, the Township Solicitors' Office did complete a review of the asset of the asset list and provide updated property owner information, and that was forwarded to the Historic Commission for their review.
So Chris, what is the next step now? Because I know that was one of the immediate next steps, but what is the Historic Commission's next step, do you know?
And I'll recall Mr. Wolfman, correct me if I'm wrong, but in receiving responses back from representatives of the Historic Commission, they're going to review everything to make sure that the list is fully up to date. We'll probably have to send it back to the Solicitors' Office to review property owner information, and then there would probably then there would be some communication with the property owners.
Will that come from the Historic Commission or from the Township? How will that communication look like?
To be determined.
Okay.
And then in terms of our geothermal well ordinance amendment, that has been sent to the Chester County Planning Commission's office, and we are waiting comments from them. They have 30 days, which I believe expires this Fri- this Friday or this Saturday, I can't remember, but those are still forthcoming. The prohibition on the distribution of polystyrene will go into effect in terms of enforcement on March 9th, 2025. We did send final notices out to all of the impacted businesses the week of January 27th. I believe there were 64 notices that went out. And I've received a couple of emails, albeit limited, from some businesses just asking for qual- like certain things that would be compliant with the ordinance.
Any significant pushback?
Nope, none whatsoever. I even sent I sent it directly to the managing, the operations manager for Checkfly and he acknowledged receipt.
What do you mean by that? They're asking you, does this product work with, and is this?
Yes, they're asking if it complies with the ordinance and reviewing the definition, and they're sending actually like links. One business sent me a link to what they were looking to buy, and I was able to look at the materials and compare it to the definition of the ordinance, and everything looks to be compliant.
And we never put together, or the SAC never put together a list of like permissible materials that we did for the plastic bag?
I thought they put together some, they put together some information, because there was a flyer that we also included in the, that we also included.
So for the plastic bag, we included a list of vendors, do we do?
There was a list, there was a list of vendors in here.
There's a page, there's a page on our website dedicated to the plastic bag ordinance, right?
Correct, and there is one for the styrene band ordinance as well.
So it's a separate page?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm looking right at it as we speak.
So we're getting feedback from the businesses or which?
No, nothing negative.
That's March 9th, right?
March 9th is when enforcement begins. So there were notices that were sent out with adoption back in the fall of 2024, and then we just like we did with the plastic bag and straw band, we sent out follow-up notices the week of January 27th, so roughly six weeks before enforcement.
Did we ever determine that Chester County Hospital lunch in their cafeteria is affected by that?
I included them on the distribution list.
So the alarm was here, the hospitals?
I included them on the distribution list. But I haven't gotten any pushback from any businesses that have contacted me.
You don't feed that at all?
None. And I've gotten none of the return to sender letters or anything like that, everything. It seems like everything went out accordingly.
We should probably break it up like we did before and check on it after March 9th. SAC committed, we broke up services. This is established, guys? I don't know who has that.
I have.
Mostly see how they're doing. Mostly see like how the business is interfering with not having it, or I don't know if they're having any hardship or.
I think Mr. Holm would like to go to Popeyes and check them out again.
So I think I visited 10 and they had questions, which was good. Right. We probably do that again.
In terms of the Township Multi-Middle Transportation Fund Grant, I did get contacted by Michael Hartman, the Chief of Staff for Senator Comida's office. And he indicated, I indicated to him that we are still seeking funding for the Montgomery Avenue project, and he indicated that they were hopeful that awards would be announced by the end of March. So hoping it'll, that would be within the eight to 12-month timeline, so hoping that we would hear that. Unfortunately, we did not get the grant for Community Park for the second phase. So we do have that project in our budget, we do have it in the 10-year capital plan, and the question before the board is, do we want to seek additional grant funding or move forward with the $450,000 that we've secured? But all the projects were included in those applications for the $450,000. This was the only application that carved out the specific components.
Are we using any of our restricted parks funds for that project?
That was the plan.
Are we using all of the restricted parks funds for the project?
The transfer from the restricted parks funds was intended to cover the park expenditures for 2025, so it wasn't exclusive just to that project.
I had the opportunity to talk with Chris Peterson at Cal not so long ago, and he, I think we need to talk with him, because he was talking about potentially having another phase to this where it could give us the opportunity to apply for more grants, so do the bathroom this year, but maybe defer the splash pad, excuse me, splash pad until 26 and give us another opportunity to go for more grant applications. So I think we should talk with him.
We could reapply for the, for the DCD program. Even though DCNR said we could apply again for additional funding through them, I wouldn't recommend going through the CTP2 program again because we've already been awarded $200,000, and that's a small pot of money. So I could see a scenario where, well, we've already awarded funding for your projects, we're going to award it to this program, so maybe try the DCD program again. That'd be my recommendation. I believe that has a May 31 deadline, if I'm remembering correctly.
Okay, so the action sounds like if you could talk to Chris and make a proposal to the board around that grant application and the phasing of the full round of the work, how to phase it maybe.
Chris is on vacation. I'll get, I'll get with him next week.
Okay.
Steve, yeah?
Chris, I think we've done such a great job with styrofoam bags. Is there going from the other townships on these programs so it can be more original?
We were, so West Goshen Township was the first, I believe this is correct, was the first second-class municipality in the state to adopt such an ordinance. Since then, a number of municipalities in Chester County, Montgomery County, throughout the entire region have adopted similar ordinances. The prohibition on polystyrene was lifted from, I believe it was like Ambler in Euclid, Euclid Township. So a lot of places kind of took their, took their plastic bag ordinance, expanded it to polystyrene, and like we kind of amended our ordinance to follow suit. So it's a, it's more of a regional trend at this point.
You know what I mean? Places like West Town, as you meet with the township managers from time to time, how are they, what's your feeling?
I don't want to delve too far into it, but it's going to depend on the, on the makeup of the policymakers and the elected body. So it's going to be different from place to place. That's all I'm going to say.
Gotcha.
But I can tell you, I mean, we talked to, as part of our research into the polystyrene ordinance, we talked to Euclid Township, Phoenixville, Tridifrin, Ambler Borough, and Upper Marion Township, I believe. So pretty sizable.
That's good. I mean, the bag ordinance, I think, is huge. This is kind of.
So yeah, unfortunately, I don't have much major feedback, but I'm just going to say we're not alone.
Is this board responsible for producing this stuff? Is this how this is another area the board decides?
Yes. Those are ordinances that are adopted by the board.
Okay, Chris.
So the last thing I'll mention is the Westchester University Master Plan. We received a draft copy of that, and we should have the conditional use application under the PUC by the end of this quarter, or have been for it.
So just remind me what, what the process is around this master plan. So I've lost track of where we were with it. We've been waiting for a long time for the university to prepare this master plan. You've shared with the board a kind of high-level set of slides around it. So the ball's in their court to what? Start a CU process now?
Yes. So they would, under the PUC ordinance, they have to file a conditional use application for the master plan, so it goes through the normal conditional use process. And I would defer to the solicitor, but I believe then that kind of grants conditional use approval for the projects that are outlined in the master plan. They still have to most likely go through the land development process, but they don't have to go through the additional conditional use layer.
For every one of those projects that will be listed. So what would the sequence be? Is it parallel with the Borough and this Township, or do they do one before the other?
Isn't the Borough not adopted PUC?
But they, so how will they manage the master plan that lists a bunch of projects for them?
Through their own process.
Probably one of the processes in the Borough.
So, but it only includes the things that are in the master plan. If they come up with a project that's not listed, they still have to go through a conditional use.
Or whatever process is described by the zoning ordinance.
So really, this master plan is like an actual list of whatever they're trying to do.
That's correct. And the Council of Trustees, it's my understanding that the Council of Trustees approved the draft master plan subject to any revisions that might need to be made. So we should see that, we should see the application by the end of March. I would imagine it'll be before the, before the board for a hearing probably, I would say, May, June timeframe probably.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Where are we at with the North Hill Stormwater Project? I was, oh, you're going to?
I was going to defer that to Brian, because now, at this point, now that the grants have been awarded and the easements have been approved by the board and recorded, that's in Brian's court.
Okay. Okay, Chris, how is it, right? Chris, Steve, you have a question for Chris?
Yeah, how much of the master plan is going to affect West Goshen Township?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit.
I mean, our overlay is south of Rosedale to some degree. We drew a line around the Rottlin individual private residences, so it's really what they already occupy, but they, as part of the master plan, there's some refurbishment of those areas. And then off Matlack Street, the whole Carter Drive, Matlack Street, where they have the administration facility type area, there's some planned improvements there. There also is, I think, on this draft that we've seen, some landscaping improvements on East Rosedale as well, around one of the residences that's there that's owned by the university. So it's a mixed bag of things, but it was consistent with the type of overlay that we had put in place as part of the whole PUC discussion several years ago now. That's probably five years ago or more.
And the housing, you know, the housing in there too?
Yeah, we, there's no housing in West Goshen. There's no additional student housing. That is not permitted, other than this temporary student housing that we've given them a.
So they're not going to build it on?
There's no, and what we've seen so far, there's no student housing posed in West Goshen.
It's minded, the PUC was all adopted before my time, but it's my understanding that the goal was to keep as much on the super block area in terms of housing as possible.
Just to bring out West Goshens.
There's going to be several components to the master plan. It's supposed to be a traffic study done, student population forecast, and so on and so forth. So there'll be a lot of different components. They really have to do a comprehensive study of where they want to go over the next five to 10 years.
But they do have a list of the projects they intend to seek money for over the next decade in this draft that we've seen.
And that, that's going to be public?
Yeah.
Once they file a conditional use application, it'll go to the, it'll go to the Planning Commission for review as well.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
I believe Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, regarding that master plan, I think you just answered the question, I think, when it goes to the Planning Commission. Like, can the public see what's going on with that right now? Like the projects related, like the college in West Goshen?
So that document we received, is that a draft in progress one? Yes, I don't know if it's.
I don't think I saw it.
Yeah.
We haven't seen it.
Okay. It's not officially submitted, it was just a, just letting yous know that they're working on it, because they've been dragging their feet for so long.
We've been bugging them for a long time, as you know, so I think this was sent to us as a kind of heads up, but I'm leery because if it's a draft format, it's subject to change, then we get into this, oh, wait a minute, this is what, you know, so I want to make sure it's, that we feel it's comfortable enough that it's not something in progress, but it's actually something that is, should be a publicly available document. But it is very high level, to be honest, at this point.
Okay.
Okay. Next up is item number 11, which is Township Engineers Stormwater Announcements and Woodlands at Greystone Update.
So I'll, we just wanted to start with North Hills. Chris and I did meet with the North Pacific Association at their annual reorganization meeting. It's interesting to see those, they should, their board's 14 members. There were 14 of them across here, people around the corner for their elections. But I can announce that Chris Peterson has recented the plans for Aqua. So the design is 95 to 98% finished. We're waiting to hear when we're on the Aqua schedule as far as relocation of their water vein. Once we get that scheduled finalized, then we can finalize the documents for our bidding. But we don't know if Aqua can commit to doing the project, so it's hard for us to put a timeline for the project or we don't know what we're going to say.
So if when Aqua does give you a specific time, if it slips or they don't hold to that time, we've already been out to bid, what are the consequences?
We'd have to extend their contract with the contract. So we're trying to alleviate the extension of the contract and also find out what they're doing. One of the requests from the North Pacific Association was to try to schedule this work around their summer schedule, because it's going to impact their use of the picnic area and the.
Yeah.
But we're at the worst.
Yeah, that's not it, but we need to, our schedule here.
Wouldn't we sign a contract with Aqua?
We haven't signed a contract with Aqua for any of this yet.
No, but wouldn't we? If they gave us a time, wouldn't we sign a contract?
Don't know how it works. Aqua is doing it at their cost, relocating, because they're just lowering the line and making it deeper. Aqua will do that for us at their cost. If we relocate it left or right, we have to, that's what happened with Bultmo, we need to move it left or horizontally. Vertically, they'll do it in half.
What's the sequence here? Does that will have to make that relocation first?
We can't get the pipe across it.
Right, so they have to do that first, then we can go ahead and do.
Yes. Okay. So once I know better of Aqua than they'll be, but the final, the final layout has been sent to Aqua for them and blessed if given of anything and all that. I just don't know. With Chris being on vacation, I don't know whether that, that it'll be submitted before you want to. We're currently addressing some of the, working through the comments from DEP on our MS4 audit, specifically MCF number five, which is a stormwater BMP in the Torrey is currently being revised and updated to be in the reported format that DEP wants. So we're working through that. Additionally, I am still waiting to hear back from the developer's attorney on Woodlands for, who called Recco for a time of the first two weeks of March to meet about Woodlands. He has not responded yet, but that doesn't mean they're not working together on their side for the date.
Have you and Solicitors' Office been working through all those?
I've been working through it. It's, it's filler work between my other projects, but I'm going to be starting on it full-time probably this week.
So you're good with the early March?
Yes. So I'll be ready in plenty of time. Lastly, follow-up to the PennDOT, I did have a, talked about having a technical meeting, the technical PennDOT meeting with February 10th with the Signals Unit and also the, one of the design team members that is doing the, looking at the. of the design team members that is doing the, looking at the project for the ramp. Outcomes of the meeting is the Signals Unit is not going to look at some of the options proposed.
So it's more, that meeting was more about educating them on what the issues were, so for them to go away and look at it?
Yes, there was.
So there was no decision made?
There was no decisions made, they're going to evaluate the split-phase request that was made, and also, PENDOT is currently, how did they, they determine that term here? PENDOT is currently in the alternative evaluation phase of their project for the 202 and South High Street.
So you're, you're more optimistic that they will be moving that project along than I was when I spoke earlier?
The estimated completion timeframe for that project is 2030.
That's only five years.
Yes.
Not too bad.
That was the estimation from PENDOT. The team that's working on the design alternatives, PENDOT, so that's all I'll say.
But you, you say completion in 2030, I mean, you got, to go through a whole process of design and buy-in and bid and construction, that, that's.
It sounds like they're pretty far along with their, they have their alternatives laid out, and they're working through the pros and cons of all the alternatives that they have.
Do you know if the alternatives impact the off-ramp?
202? I saw four alternatives and three of the four had a, a change to the off-ramp.
Okay.
Right, good, but they also said, they said they were all the alternatives, and they said where they were removing shelves.
Okay. As in, the removal of it completely, a strengthening of it?
One showed a strengthening, the other one showed relocation.
Okay.
And that was where it left off, there's, PENDOT's going to be evaluating some other concerns that were brought about the signal, so.
Okay, anything else, Brian?
That's all I have for tonight.
Questions for Brian?
The lights that are on Route 3, heading east, what are they going to do?
The new lights at the ramp?
Yeah.
That, that project is near partially finished.
What is that?
There's still more work to be done in meetings, so I don't know when they're going to be turning the lights on. That's a PENDOT.
No, I just thought you might have said that.
Yeah, that did come up that.
Questions for Brian?
Getting any closer to getting a pretty good idea when the dedication of Greystone would be happening?
We're starting some meeting for the beginning of March with the developer to go over everything that's staying.
At that, at that point there, you'd be in.
The idea is to get it done and get it dedicated as much as the open space. If you haven't pushed me, I'll say it'll be there here.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian? Thanks, Brian. We'll move on to agenda item number 12, zoning officer announcements.
We have been actively addressing various property maintenance complaints, zoning hearing board applications, and reviewing pending land development applications, however, nothing significant at this time to update.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Shelby? All right, we'll move on to agenda item 13, which is approval of the Board of Supervisors. Meeting minutes have January the 21st. I have two corrections, one typo correction and one other edit, Chris. Page six, the third paragraph that starts, Sal De Prisco, resident of West Coast Township, would ask, should be in there, asked if other municipalities do this. And then on page 10, paragraph that starts, or up from the bottom of page 10, says a member of the audience, that actually was Mr. De Prisco.
Hi, everyone.
Go ahead, Nate.
Page four, fifth paragraph down, where you have, this was where the issue was occurred, I believe it should be, this was where the issue had occurred. Yes.
Get the paragraph, which paragraph is it?
Thanks, any others, Nate? Tina, Ashley, John, you have any corrections?
No. Page three.
There's, how many do you have, Johnny, a lot? Do you want to email them to Chris, are they typos or are they actual content?
Well, these are typos.
Okay, they're just typos, if we could just maybe send them to you, Chris. If there's anything that's in content related.
Well, there is one content.
Okay, what's that one then, John?
The content we do is page two, and this is 12. Sal De Prisco, he's not a resident of West Coast Township, he's a business owner. He hasn't actually lived in Township.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Page six, one, two, three, four, five, six, paragraph, Mr. Walsh noted that the proposed agreed would be, should the agreement would be for.
For you to plant.
Five, six, great.
Yeah, I have four other typos, I can just give them through into the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, if there's any content changes, let's get those, they're just typos, maybe just email, email them to you, Chris.
Okay, that's fine.
So as you can see, we do look at these minutes.
I never said.
No, I'm just explaining it to anybody watching. Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the Board of Supervisors' meeting minutes for January 21st with the typo corrections that we have identified, plus Mr. Helmers to come. Is there a second?
Call second.
Thank you. Any questions on the meeting minutes from anyone else? Okay, we'll take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on, it passes 5-0. Agenda item number 14, approval of the Treasurer's Report dated January the 31st for the General Fund, the Sewer Revenue Fund, the Waste and Recycling Fund, and the Capital Reserve Fund, and the bills to be paid for these funds. I will make a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report and the bills to be paid. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I just had some questions.
Okay. Now, if you've got questions, the time to ask.
Okay, I guess I'm just curious, Steve, why do we, Steve Crum, why do we reimburse him for planning PNPEI course? We do a course?
Those are training through the Pennsylvania Municipal Educate, Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Education Institute for Planning Commission members and hearing board members, elected officials, anybody who wants to go to this.
Oh.
I sent those on now, everybody.
Okay.
And a couple, I think we have probably, there's going to be more reimbursements, I think we've had five of the Planning Commission members sign up for it.
That's a good thing.
And then, I'm thinking this is a financial terminology, a blanket PO1, blanket PO, one page, I don't think it has a page number. Is that what that is?
Page six.
Oh, page six, at the top. I'm assuming, is that like a terminology name for, it's not really a blanket, at the top on the list?
Those are for, those are for auto parts.
Oh, so it is a blanket, so they're total $2,000 and 156?
Those are for auto parts associated with the vehicles in the police department.
There's open, there's open purchase order number one, which allows for all these parts to be procured against it.
Okay.
Trying to have a big PO is, what is it, like, five grand or something?
I don't know what it is.
The total of those on their blanket is $2,156.
Those are for material for, those are for material for repair for the police vehicles.
That's it? No.
I have a question, on the manual bills list, check number 101434 for Belfour USA, for $10,004, $10 for emergency board of services, and technical fence grab, what was that for?
That was, we needed to secure the site for the former Boston market that, where there was a fire a few months ago, and we're going to be seeking reimbursement from the property owner for that.
So we've paid this bill now, and we're still waiting for reimbursement, right?
Correct. We had to pay them, the site had to be secured.
Yeah, I understand, I remember you emailed the board about it. Any other questions on the bills to be paid?
No. Yeah, check number 101456 and 101464, these are payments to the Borough of Westchester, it says first payment, when do we do the second payments to Borough of Westchester and Goshen Fire? When do they get their remainder?
I believe the second one is in either June or September, I can't remember. I can't remember, I'd have to go back.
Should we split it like, that's maybe six months or so?
It's split in two payments, I don't remember what the contracts call for. It's either, it's either June, June or September, I can't remember.
Okay, that's right.
Any other questions on the bills? Okay, we've got a motion, is there any, anyone here with a question? Okay, let's take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on, the motion passes 5-0.